I call this special meeting of the Centennial Board of School Directors to order. Ms. Robel, maybe we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Birdnick. Everybody needs to unmute to respond. Thank you. Mr. Birdnick? Mrs. Brancato? Mrs. Crouson? Mr. Dixon? Mrs. Islandberg? Mr. Goddickson? Mr. Miller? Mr. Panofsky? Mr. Martin? Nine members present.
Thank you. Let's have the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Does anybody have any announcements from the board?
Just a point of order, Mr. Dixon. The, this is a special meeting, so community comments are limited to items on the agenda when they're being discussed following board comments. I was going to make a motion that we grant an exception to the attendance zone rule for our own faculty and staff who may have sent in comments so that they can be read.
So, the way the agenda is currently structured, we do have a community comment section immediately following the presentation. I think we should be clear with the community and with our faculty, staff this evening. The board will not, will not be deciding on a final plan this evening. We are simply going to be hearing a presentation. And we will be selecting which three plans, you know, are finalist plans, but most of that is pretty pro forma. So, in other words, this is not a, this is not, we're not going to come to any final decision this evening. Having said that, Dr. Seidenberger, I believe, is it correct that we had 26 comments, community comments?
We could have more. That was the last time I checked. So, you'll have to check with Mr. Ross to see how many we have.
Do we have an updated number?
Twenty-seven community comments.
Twenty-seven community comments. Well, I think that we will, Mr. Ross, if you could, while we go through the presentation that we're about to go through, kind of go through those 27 comments and separate out anything, I'd imagine the bulk of them have to do with the presentation, so that the agenda item is in the correct place. We can read any comments that are not to do with that at the appropriate place later in the agenda. Does that make sense?
Yes. All comments are related to reopening.
Oh, okay. We have no other comments in that case.
I will check one more time, but I believe, yes, all comments are directed towards reopening.
In that case, we'll just read those 27 comments after, after the presentation. Before we go to that presentation, I will say, you know, just ahead of this, I know Dr. Seidenberger and, and the, and his team, our, you know, our cabinet, our district administrators, our support staff who've been involved, who are going in, you know, working with the central office while trying to get this plan together, faculty who have been participating, the committees that were set up to, to explore different types of plans, the hybrid plan, the full reopening, the virtual reopening, et cetera. Everybody's worked really, really hard. Clearly, we live in unprecedented times. Nobody, you know, we have a group of wonderful paid professionals, but it must be said that none of them and none of us could possibly have anticipated the, the situation in which we now find ourselves, and I know everyone knows that and understands that. So, we'll certainly listen to everyone's comments, and we beg for everybody's patience, because what we are faced with doing here is not selecting the best choice, but the least bad one is really what it boils down to. Obviously, in a perfect world, we'd just be opening the school district like always, and that's what we would be doing. We do not have a perfect world. We have the cards that we've been dealt, and nobody real, there's no playbook for this. So, I do ask again that everybody just understand that, especially, you know, the school board volunteers, we're all volunteers, and we're just doing our best, and so is our administrators. Obviously, they're professionals, but still, you know, they're, they're working their best, they're dedicated to the education of our students, and nobody has the definite right answer here. So, with that said, I'll turn it over to Dr. Seidenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon, and welcome. Sorry for the delay, board members, but we'll try to get through this in as professional a manner as we can. Okay, tonight, we're going to start our discussion with the Pennsylvania Health and Safety Plan. As you know, all school districts in the state of Pennsylvania are charged with developing a PA Health and Safety Plan. This is a template that's been developed by the PDE. I will just say that this guide basically is our guiding path for all instructional and non-instructional programs relative to reopening activities. We were advised by PDE that we should develop plans with flexibility in mind, and I'm pleased to tell you tonight that I think our plan meets that standard. Let me tell you a little bit about the plan. The Health and Safety Plan is, relates to how the district will operate in the COVID-19 situation in the following areas: cleaning methods, sanitizing, social distancing, staff development, health protocols, monitoring student and staff health, resources, education models, and communications. I want to thank members of the central office team for their work, including the office personnel, the administrative assistants. As Mr. Dixon said, everybody put in a Herculean effort to get this finished. I also want to highlight some, some people who played important roles in this process over the last month. That would be Mrs. Karen Pressler, our head nurse, staff members from the Bucks County Department of Health. I do want to recognize all of our staff volunteers, including administrators, teachers, support staff, who worked on the various committees. And we're going to add the names of everyone who was involved when we submit this final document to PDE. I believe that that's the least we can do for people who really cared and were willing to give up their time and their talents to make this plan and our scenarios, I think, meaningful. I also want to pay special thanks to Mr. Goddickson, Ms. Brancato, and Mr. Miller. Each of those individuals served on one of the committees, planning committees, as we went through the, the various scenarios. I also want to thank the staff and parents who completed surveys and offered suggestions, comments. Truly, and I'll speak to this a little bit later, what I found particularly meaningful were over 500 parents offered comments and suggestions, and many of the staff members did the same. No matter what the survey showed, I particularly found the comments and questions very rich and were very helpful in going forward. I also want to thank Nathan Ross, who did some incredible PR work to help us with our communications to the public. So, where are we? Well, let me be frank. We expect this plan to change and become better as we get more information, refine some procedures and protocols going forward. We keep learning new information just about every day. I think that's been an understatement. I feel like every day has been a new challenge just to keep up with the information. We do expect to ask the board at our August 18th meeting to, to approve a revision of this plan tonight. So, again, it's a living document. It will change. There probably be some areas that we will take out based on what actions we take, and also some areas that we will strengthen going forward. And finally, we will continue to grow and learn as an organization so that our next version provides as much up-to-date information as we can. So, at the heart of our plan is how we will open school in September of 2020. To get to this answer, the district formed three working groups to develop plans for three possible scenarios. They are a full in-person or bricks and mortar return-to-school scenario. We call it Scenario 1. Scenario 2 is a blended or hybrid program where students attend school two days a week and have online instruction for three days a week. We also have Scenario 3, which is a full virtual program with the intent that it is a segue to our students returning to a full brick-and-mortar program. In other words, it's going to be a, a strong program, but one it is temporary in nature. And lastly, as we started our planning program, we wanted to highlight for the board and the public that we do have a fourth scenario that parents could choose, and that would be our Centennial Virtual Learning Academy, which is attached, affiliated to the Centennial School District. It is operated by a third-party company, DLN, which is Virtual Learning Network. Our students remain in the educational family. However, the curriculum and the staff is provided by DLN. So, that is a fourth option. So, are we on slide one? Can you take us there, Nathan, please? Guiding Principles. Thank you. As is the custom, as I found when I came to Centennial a little over a month ago, and I'm really pleased to say that every administrative meeting that I've been involved in, there's always a set of guiding principles and objectives. And so, we use these foundational principles to guide our work in this. Let me just highlight them for you. Ensure the safety and well-being of all students and employees. Support equity and accessibility to learning for all our students. Provide, provide effective instruction to meet the needs of all students. Foster positive social and emotional wellness of all stakeholders. Next slide, please. Thank you. We also put forward how we all evaluate items and planning vehicles going forward, and that is, very simply, the health and safety of students and staff, parent, student-staff impact, feasibility, financial impact, parent-staff input, and risk. I will mention to the board that you will see that, as I make my recommendation next week, that I'm going to use those elements as foundations for my written recommendation. Okay, next. Now, we also want to just take a step backward. Every school district in Pennsylvania was thrown a giant curveball last year when COVID-19 took over, and basically, all the schools in Pennsylvania were shut down. Well, Centennial, like most school districts, responded with a, a program, an online program. But I want the board and the public to know that we're committed to, we've learned some things along the way. So, moving forward, we want everyone to know that the use of the Centennial School District Curriculum Law, grades K-12, will be a foundation for our program. One of the things we want to accomplish in those scenarios that use remote learning is that we're going to certainly do more face-to-face instruction, both synchronous and asynchronous for students. And we're going to implement a consistent design structure for delivery and facilitation of learning. A common K-12 design in K-5 will use Google classrooms, and grade six to 12 will use Canvas. Want to go to the next one, please? As I mentioned, we asked parents to complete some surveys. They were kind enough to do two. The first one was more exploratory nation in nature. The second one was a little more in-depth. Remarkably, here's the results from the first survey. You, just with a pie chart, I don't know if the percentages are that important, but you could see at the end of June, a majority of parents were looking for, basically, return, the full return to school with the next highest level students in a hybrid, and then the smaller pie chart would be online. Well, let's take a look at the results that were just finished last week, and again, the same, next one, please. And similar pie chart, but you, you can see the dimensions have changed a little bit. Still, significant amount of parents who wanted a full return, but you'll see that we certainly have a better response for parents who are interested not only in brick-and-mortar, but in some type of online experience for the child as well. So, I, I would say that's an emerging, emerging movement on the part of parents and one that we're paying attention to. And we got a lot of parent questions about our hybrid program and our virtual program, and we're in a process of answering those questions. So, may I have the next slide, please? Okay, one of the things that I, I think we get a lot of questions on, what are those two big words that we throw around? You know, everybody likes educational jargon. We don't want to hide behind those words, but simply, two key words. One's synchronous learning, which basically, and there's a description. I don't want to go through each of these bullets word by word. Basically, you're talking about live teaching. Teachers send out invitations, students join. It's face-to-face. And then, next part is asynchronous. Go ahead, Nathan, if you don't mind. Then, we have, students and teachers will be involved in instruction, but just at different times. And so, teachers will use a variety of learning methods and instructional techniques to, to work with students, teachers at home, students at home. So, basically, we're going to be using those terms. They are the correct terms. What we don't mean to throw around educational jargon. It's just, those are the standard words for what we're doing with remote learning. Okay? Next one. All right, now I'm going to turn it over. The board's going to hear from our committee chairpersons. We have three people that served as chairpersons, or I would say guides on this journey. And the first person we're going to hear from is going to be Melissa Bolden. Then, you're going to hear from Dr. Dennis Best, who's the high school principal at William Tenet, and then finally, Anthony Gabriel from the curriculum department. Now, and I think you're going to be educated. Again, as Mr. Dixon said, people spending an inordinate amount of time getting some concepts, starting to drill them down, so that we're basically at an operational level. Is everything all packed up and ready to go? Not necessarily, but I think we have a pretty clear idea of how we would operate under these scenarios. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bolden. So, take it away, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, Scenario 1 was the brick-and-mortar option, and that's bringing all students back five days a week into our school buildings. Next slide, please. There were many actions that we, as a district, would have to consider in order to bring our students and staff safely back into the buildings five days a week. So, here are the options we can, we needed to consider. Social distancing of at least six feet between students when feasible. Our classroom desk configurations would have to change. All of the desks would face forward. All staff and students would be required. According to, the state would be required to wear face coverings. Exemptions could be granted only through medical, mental health, or disability exceptions, and this would need to be documented in a 504 plan or a IEP. Buses would operate with a maximum of two students per seat, and all students and adults riding the bus would be required to wear a face covering. And there would be considerations where we had to modify lunch, lunch because of the amount of students in the room, and as, and for supporting students in the lunchroom. Can you go to the next slide, please? Students and staff who exhibited symptoms of COVID would be required to stay home. Parents, guardians, and staff would be asked to conduct daily symptom screenings at home before students would come to school or staff would come to work. Daily schedules would need to be revised to minimize the movement throughout the school. Time would be scheduled for washing and the sanitizing of hands throughout the day. Every effort would be made to help this, the school day be engaging, warm, and nurturing, supported despite all of the changes that we would have to make. Next slide, please. So, there are benefits to coming back to school five days a week, returning to what we would consider our close to normal. And one of the biggest benefits is students receive face-to-face instruction. The American Academy of Pediatrics strongly advocates that students are physically present in a school building, because being present helps to prevent social isolation. It improves staff's ability to identify and address important learning deficits as well as social, emotional needs. Being present in the school allows schools to provide help with food security and physical activity for children and their families. It also allows schools to address economic and social inequalities. Next slide, please. There are many challenges. You know, with every positive, there's, there's a challenge, and there were many challenges to having us come back full brick-and-mortar for five days a week. There's an increased health risk due to population of staff and pupils in the building. We would be over our building capacity according to the new guidelines with the distance restrictions. The six-feet distancing requirement would affect lunch procedures, the location for where students would eat lunch. It affects the transitions in the hallway. We would really have to time when students were coming out of the classrooms and whole classes were coming out of the classrooms. Transportation, challenges with transportation because of the two students on a, maximum of two students in the seat would require additional vehicles, additional staffing, and a change in scheduling. Timing for when the buses would come. We would have to look at traffic and entrance into school. Increased staff needs overall would be a challenge for professional and support staff. With the six-feet distancing, our classroom capacity would change, and so we would need more space. So, having students be educated in additional rooms would require staff to teach and support those students. Staff illnesses and leaves of absences. With additional staff, we would have to have enough substitutes to support staff when they are not in school, and that is a challenge, because all districts are facing this. So, the staff pool is most likely limited, because all school districts will have the same demand. And this all creates an economic impact for our district. These challenges related to the considerations that we would have to make in order to bring all students back into school, and it is our desire and everyone's desire to return back to brick-and-mortar, but to return to it in a safe manner. And with the current guidelines, as well as restrictions, it is a, more of a challenge than a benefit right now. So, thank you very much.
Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dennis Best, and he's going to be telling you about Scenario 2.
Thank you, Dr. Seidenberg, for, for passing over, and, and thank you, Mrs. Bolden, for your presentation of Scenario 1. This second scenario that we're about to present this evening, and I'll be co-presenting with Dr. Kathy Perkins and Mr. Pat Goldner, so we represent each of our different levels of the school district, will begin now. One thing I want to mention, in this particular scenario, we are splitting the students into two alphabetical cohorts, and just so everyone is clear, we will work with families that have students with different last names to ensure that they participate in the same cohort for consistency's sake for the family. So, I know that's a question that's going to come up, and I wanted to address that at the very beginning. Nate, I'm going to ask you to advance to our first slide, and I'm going to turn over to Dr. Kathy Perkins to begin our elementary presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Best. As far as the elementary schedule goes, the cohort that was planning this came up with several options that we felt best met the needs of our students. When we look at Cohort 1, those students with last names A to L would participate on Monday and Tuesday face-to-face. Cohort B would participate Thursday and Friday face-to-face. We are looking at our special ed population, and depending on their IEP, they could attend anywhere from two to four days a week. Our EL students would participate four days a week. Wednesday would be a day that we would have everyone virtual. That would also provide us an opportunity to really deep clean the buildings between cohorts that come in. The way distance learning will look is Cohort B will be working from home on Monday and Tuesday. Both A and B will be working virtually on Wednesday, and Cohort A will be working on Thursday and Friday from home. So, what is this going to look like? We will have the students working mainly face-to-face on their core courses, and I'll go over that shortly in showing you a sample schedule that we are looking at. So, from home, they will look at working on their science and social studies lessons. They will also have synchronous specials Monday through Friday. We are looking to offer our specials classes, which include art, music, digital literacy, health, physical education, and library. They would be live classes that the students could tune into at two separate times during the day, as well as those teachers will be recording their lessons in case a student would not be able to participate. We will also be having our reading specialists provide synchronous interventions to those students who have been identified as needing those interventions. On those distance learning days, our students will have practice and enrichment in the court content areas every day, and our gifted support students will also have the synchronous support of our gifted support teachers. Nate, if you can, if I can sign. Okay, this is our, our draft schedule. Much of the, the timing of school depends on transportation, and those things we are still working out. But we're proposing a six-hour day or a five-and-a-half-hour day. We realize that the pandemic has taken a toll on our students and our staff. We realize that there needs to be a lot of social and emotional learning and lessons, and some mental health support during this time. So, we're looking at having our teacher day stay the same from 8:15 to 3:45 with them taking their prep period in the morning. Students would report either at 9:25 for the six-hour day or 9:30 for the five-and-a-half-hour day. And again, these times are contingent upon transportation, as there are a lot of complicated situations that, especially at the elementary school with daycare drops and so forth, and custodial issues that we have to take into consideration. So, once we get a better sense of that, we'll have a better sense of the timing of the day. So, our day would potentially look like our students having a morning meeting face-to-face, as well as social, emotional lesson and lessons throughout the day. Our RILA, which is our reading, English, and language charts, would be approximately 120 minutes. We would have an additional writing period for a six-hour day, which is 30 minutes. Math would encompass 100 minutes. We are following the guidelines of the state, as well as the CDC, with having our students have lunch in the classroom. We're looking to utilize our recess and cafeteria aids to minimize the risk of exposure. They would be assigned to a particular homeroom and, you know, monitor. They would be assigned to a particular homeroom and um, you know, monitor that lunch period in the classroom. We are also looking at utilizing our outdoor space as much as possible to give students an opportunity to be outside um, through learning as well as through lunch period. Uh, recess cannot happen um, as we've had it happen um, in a normal school day. We are looking to have some breaks throughout the day um, that will be scheduled. And again, our recess and cafeteria monitors, um, we're looking to have them support that uh, for us during that time to really limit the exposure. One of the reasons we are also looking at um, having our specialists um, teach virtually is uh, that would engage our students while they're home. Um, as well as limit the risk to our staff and our students um, and exposing them to the virus. So essentially, we're really limiting the number of classrooms they enter and, and so forth. You can go to the next slide. So again, just to kind of get an idea of what our days would look like. So on a Monday cohort B at home would be participating in their two specials classes. A social study, science lesson, RILA math practice, um, utilizing some of the tools that we, they're familiar with already. Um, and also having, you know, those students identified synchronous interventions with the reading specialists, gifted support. We're also looking at synchronous speech for those students that receive speech services as well as um, occupational therapy and physical therapy. Uh, Wednesday is um, the only day that might look a little bit different. Um, because we're switching cohorts, we felt that having the teachers meet with the Monday, Tuesday cohort A class face to face. What they would do on Wednesday is have some closure in the morning with the students they had in front of them Monday and Tuesday. Uh, and they would um, be directing them, you know, and answering any questions they had about their virtual days ahead of them. In the afternoon, they would meet with their cohort B students to get them ready for coming in on Thursday and Friday. So they know what to expect when they are face to face in the classroom. Can you go to the next slide? Okay, and you know, I just wanted to give a visual of what our, you know, days would look like. And that's it. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Goldar to review the middle school schedule.
Thank you, Dr. Perkins. Good evening, everyone. So looking at the hybrid middle school schedule for, we have the same breakdown A through L and M through Z for all students. Uh, if you look at the top of the slide, you can see the breakdown by minutes. And this is our typical schedule that I have projected up onto the screen. Uh, the one change that you would normally see is our lunches. Uh, rather than put three different lunch schedules on the screen, which will complicate things. Uh, we just went with one lunch, but students that are coming into the building would still have the three different spread out lunches. Uh, but you can see we have our regular time set up. And on A through L, students would report to school on Monday and Tuesday and follow us traditional schedule. Uh, while they are in the building, our students M through Z last names, they would be learning virtually. And this would be asynchronous. Uh, Wednesday, we have a hybrid schedule that is set up. And if you can link to, go to the next slide, please. You can see what it would look like for the students M through Z. And it's just reverse. So uh, these students would attend school on Thursday and Friday. Uh, one of the, one of the questions that came up regarding schedule with our committee, what, what would happen? For example, if a student were to attend on Monday and Tuesday and then with all students being available on Wednesday, uh, which is what our model looks like, uh, what would happen with students that might be ahead of other students? And, and one of the easy workarounds for that, and I just wanted to put that out there was that teachers could begin to start their week technically on Wednesday or on Thursday. That way, when they get to the, the next Wednesday, um, everybody would be on the same path. Uh, so I'll let you take a look at this for just a second, but it, it has our regular minutes, our regular schedule built in. Uh, and then we're going to get to Wednesday, which is the more complex part of our schedule. So you can skip forward again. This is the breakdown of our Wednesday schedule. So this would be synchronous. Uh, so the teachers would be online and the students would be logging in. This would be all students, A through Z, and this would be their chance uh, to be on together. So there's twenty-five minute classes, there is a five minute switch that's built in. Uh, that'd be a good chance for students to do those, those little things they need to, to do in between, like grab a snack, use the restroom. Uh, just give a second to kind of regroup and reset themselves. Uh, and again, this would follow all eight periods. Uh, now we, we follow a day one, day two schedule in the middle school. So the first Wednesday that comes up would be a day one. The next Wednesday that would come up uh, would be a day two. And it would just continue that pattern throughout the, the time that we're in the hybrid model. Uh, when we get to the afternoon after students return from lunch, we would have small group instruction and support. So this would be a time for our teachers uh, to meet with individual students or groups of students that they feel need uh, some support or enrichment or any type of individualized instruction. Uh, this would also be a time for us to build in any social, emotional wellness activities. Uh, some students, however, during this time would be able to, to follow their own asynchronous learning for assignments or tasks or projects that they're working on. And if you could move on to the next and last slide, please. This is a breakdown of the minutes. Uh, so the first one is pretty straightforward. Everyone in the entire school would be attending for seven hundred and eight minutes because that's the count of the two days. So if you're A through L, this would be Monday, Tuesday, these are your in-person minutes. Uh, the next two, it depends on what your Wednesday afternoon looks like. So everyone will do at least two hundred synchronous minutes. And again, that's the time when you are online with your teacher. And everyone will, will do at least seven hundred and eight asynchronous minutes. And again, that's the time that you are logged on, on the day that you're not coming into the building. And then the afternoon on Wednesday, there is an additional one hundred and thirty-five minutes. Uh, for some students, they will not be online with their teacher doing work, but they will be working on a project or an assignment. Uh, for some students, however, they will be working in a small group or they'll be receiving additional instruction uh, or enrichment. So that's where that variance is uh, as far as the time. Uh, Dr. Perkins alluded to a lot of the same things that we'll be doing uh, in the middle school as well as far as trying to utilize our outside space when we can. We plan on using the cafeteria for lunch uh, with six foot spacing. And this could be done with desks. Uh, and like I said, we, we plan on using our outdoor space additionally for lunch as well as for breaks in the day and also um, for classes when possible, weather permitting. And now I will pass it off to Dr. Best.
Thank you, Mr. Goldar uh, for that comprehensive report. Uh, so we, we are going to begin with the high school portion of the hybrid plan at this point. Uh, what you see in front of you right now is the traditional bell schedule that we run at the high school. Uh, on days that students are attending traditionally at Williamson High School, this is the schedule they'd follow. Uh, we have five minutes of passing time, which is more than sufficient to get them from uh, from class one to class two and so forth. And it also allows uh, for fifteen minutes between lunches for us to uh, do su- sufficient cleaning in the cafeteria uh, to prepare each uh, lunch for the next group of students. Similar to Log College. Well, and, and Clinger Middle School as well, we'll be looking to uh, use additional alternate locations for lunch, including outside spaces uh, and potentially our main lobby uh, if need be uh, to make sure that the students have six feet apart when they're having lunch. Nate, if you could move forward to the next slide. So what you'll see here, uh, similar to what you saw for the middle level is our alternate schedule uh, for cohorts one and two. Divided up A through L, M through Z. Uh, for our students in cohort one, on Monday and Tuesday, they would attend their uh, black and white day classes traditionally on Monday and Tuesday. Uh, Wednesday is the crossover day that we'll look at a little bit more in depth momentarily. And on Thursday and Friday, they would attend virtually uh, in an asynchronous fashion with uh, project-based assessments for the students to take care of. Um, as we move to our next slide, you can see the schedule reverse for our N through Z cohort two students who will be attending traditionally at the end of the week. Um, as you've seen in each of these slides, we alternate synchronous and asynchronous opportunities for learning for students on Wednesdays uh, to make sure that they uh, have the opportunity to check in with their black and white day teachers on alternating weeks. In a typical schedule, our students have the opportunity in a month where there's no days off to have ten in-person instructional blocks of time with their teachers for each of their classes. Uh, because they attend an eight-period alternate day schedule. In this particular schedule, they would have the opportunity for four in-person in uh, traditional instructional experiences with their teachers as well as two more virtual synchronous opportunities. So we'd, we'd be dropping from, from ten traditional to six uh, to a blend of six uh, in-person and synchronous virtual opportunities in this model. However, we do feel like this would uh, give us an opportunity to maximize instruction as much as possible. Uh, given that the kids would only be attending school half the time. Um, our Wednesday schedule, which you'll see in a moment, would look along these lines. So for when the students are asynchronous, they would have um, a, a bell schedule to follow in the morning even from home. Uh, we've provided uh, breaks in between each synchronous session uh, to allow students to log off, log on to the next meeting if they need to take a moment for themselves. They'll have that, same thing for teachers. There is a lunch provided in the middle of the day. And then at the end of the day, there's time for individual and small group meetings uh, that will be scheduled by teachers based on need. Um, so there, there's a great deal of opportunity for FaceTime with teachers both traditionally and synchronously in a virtual environment uh, in the blended model. Um, there are also advantages and disadvantages of going with a model uh, of this kind. And if we could advance Nate to the next slide. So i- in, in, in a blended model, you know, if you think back to Ms. Bolden's presentation on the brick and mortar potential schedule uh, that you saw earlier. In a blended model, we can definitely offer more social distancing. Uh, we can also offer, continue to offer uh, face to face instruction in that parameter. Um, kids get an opportunity to return to school and have some interaction with their peers and teachers. A model like this is somewhat more compatible with, with parents' work schedules because at least a few days a week, they, they, they know when their child will be in school or their children will be in school. Uh, keeping with our alpha model. On the other side, there, there's challenges as well to this. Um, you know, we, we can't completely guarantee six feet distance in all situations um, in this blended model um, for parents who are working, parents and guardians. Again, we can guarantee your children will be in school some of the time, but not all of the time. Um, and then final uh, concern that we have is just the reliability of, of access to the internet, which is always a question uh, when there's distance or, or blended learning involved. So um, we feel like this is a really viable model. Um, and it will all depend on um, you know, where we are with, with the coronavirus at, at any point in time. But we do feel like this is a model we can pivot to out of blended learning. And we feel like we can pivot to this model from brick and mortar learning um, overnight. So um, at this point, I am going to turn over to Mr. Anthony Gabriel to present uh, Plan Three, which is our virtual option.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Uh, I will be presenting on the CSD online school option. This option for scenario three is with the intent of when appropriate and safe uh, that we transition back into a more traditional model. I'll also be presenting tonight with Mr. Orney Ortiz, Mr. Andrew Drago and Dr. Dennis Best will be back on the floor to help us out with the high school schedule. If you can advance the slide, please, Nate. So the consideration is that we took into account for the online learning, full online learning, if we have to open in this manner. We did use the spring feedback. Uh, we, we collected feedback, as Dr. Sidenberg mentioned earlier, from parents, students and teachers on what did and did not work well during our continuity of learning. And we took that very seriously in our planning for this model. I can assure you that we are, have been working very hard to make sure that if we need to go this route, this is not going to be the same experience as the continuity of learning that we had to react to uh, back in March. We did take into consideration like the other models that can impact of the schedule on student and family home life. Uh, we are trying to, on uh, the online experience is trying to mirror the brick and mortar as much as possible. Again, the hope with this is when it's safe and appropriate and possible, we want to transition back into a more traditional model. Uh, and we also worked very closely with uh, Dr. Bass's group on scenario two models and try to again uh, mirror as much of those schedules as we could. So if we do have to be fluid to move in and out of the different scenarios, it won't be that much of a, of a, of a difference for the students. Next slide, please, Nate. Uh, one major change uh, coming in, and this is one of the reasons it will not be the same uh, as the spring experience is that we will be tracking attendance and grades will be required. Uh, that was sort of uh, was not the case back in the spring, but that will be the case in the fall. So there will be a little bit more um, attention paid to, to both of those issues. Uh, we tried to build a consistent schedule of synchronous and asynchronous learning, which again, came out of a lot of the parent feedback and student feedback and teacher feedback at the end of the spring. And we looked to balance the needs for individualized instruction, small group instruction, whole group instruction. So that there was a variety of different types throughout the days. And then we did build in flex time for remediation, enrichment support, IEP meetings and other um, structures of, of that sort. Next slide. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ortiz. He's going to go through the K to five online schedule.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you. And so as Mr. Gabriel alluded to, our scenario is with uh, virtual and the intent to get back into the brick and mortar setting. So with that being said, we understood how we ended the school year last year, particularly at the elementary level. And one of the feedback uh, that we got from parents was an uh, request or a need for more synchronous learning. Now, we're not expecting to have our boys and girls sitting in front of a computer screen for up to six hours a day because that's not realistic. But we do want to ramp up the synchronous instruction, the teacher-directed instruction. So if we were to do that, we want to mirror uh, the schedule that we normally would have in our school day in the building. And we want to use the curriculum that we normally would be using as well. So what you see here on this screen, it would be an example of the breakdown for uh, reading. And so we would have, for example, about twenty minutes of asynchronous reading for a recorded read aloud. Ten minutes of asynchronous lesson, particularly focusing on the K to two band here with the phonological awareness piece. And then teachers would provide some level of support in terms of the phonics up to two, twenty to thirty minutes of, of synchronous instruction. And then small group instruction, which happens on a daily basis, would be broken down into two groups where the teacher would work with one group synchronously while the other group worked asynchronously. And then there would be a, a flip in terms of the second group would work synchronously with the teacher while the first group worked asynchronously. If you could turn to the next slide. And so like I, as I said, our schedule will mirror what we normally do in the brick and mortar. Now, we're not going to have the boys and girls, again, sit in front of the computer for up to six hours, but we'll have two and a half to possibly three and a half hours of teacher-directed synchronous instruction. And the staff will be providing specialized instruction as needed, such as ESL or Special Education Services. And the amount of special education service will be determined by the IEP teams with consideration given to students uh, with needs. And students will also have opportunities to participate in choice activities throughout, throughout the day to practice and extend uh, their work uh, away from the computer. Because we, we also understand that we can't have them, again, sitting in front of the computer screen for up to six hours. Next slide. Now I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Drago.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Good evening, everyone. The middle school virtual subcommittee consisted of teachers from both Log and Clinger. And it was a representative cross-section of middle school instructional staff, including both Core and Expo teachers and association representation. Uh, from the beginning, we set out to create a schedule that really has a central focus on synchronous instruction so that our students get that FaceTime with their teachers regularly. In addition to that, we did focus on designing a schedule that is easy to follow, easy to understand and provides consistency for everyone. Uh, we went through several iterations throughout our discussions and ultimately decided upon a schedule that has a synchronous block of time in the morning and an asynchronous wind time in the afternoon. The schedule will run Monday through Friday, alternating day one and day two, as is the case in a normal brick and mortar setting. Uh, Nate, can you put it to the next slide, please? In the morning, students will cycle through all eight of their scheduled class periods, which are going to be twenty-seven minutes in length uh, for each of those periods with a three-minute passing time between those classes. Uh, block classes for RILA and math will be fifty-seven minutes in length. And we are cognizant that both students and teachers will need periodic breaks throughout the day. And to that end, we build in an eighteen-minute break in between the fourth and fifth period. And then the remaining four scheduled periods will occur following that break. At midday, there's going to be a one-hour break prior to the asynchronous block in the afternoon. Each level, elementary, middle and high school have unique regular brick and mortar schedules, which is why each level has a sort of unique virtual schedules. Ours allows us to provide the much-needed FaceTime daily Ours allows us to provide the much-needed FaceTime daily with our students while still allowing flexibility in the afternoon to provide remediation, extra help, small group work, counseling sessions, and any other service we need to provide for our students. And just to, you know, finish up, once again, our schedule was designed for consistency and simplicity. Thanks for your time, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Best now.
Thank you, Mr. Drago. So in the full virtual model that we'd be looking at, William Tanna High School would look to continue with our alternate-day block schedule. For our students, we would condense our blocks to about 45 minutes of synchronous instruction and allow for 45 minutes of time for students to engage in authentic and relevant projects for them to complete. Our morning and PM sessions would allow for students to continue with continuity of their schedule and also would allow, in a full virtual model, for our students to attend MBIT as well as William Tanna High School to do that seamlessly without any issues. The other piece that we have set up that we're really excited about is some flex time between our synchronous blocks to allow students some check-in time with their teachers to receive feedback and also other necessary discussions to happen. On our Wednesday schedule, our asynchronous flex allows for teachers to do similar things in the hybrid model that I described earlier, where they can pull small groups, they can check in with individual students, or they can offer open-ended office hours for students who feel like they need assistance. So we're actually really happy about how the virtual model would look in terms of offering engaging learning opportunities for our high school students. Nate, if you could just jump to the next slide. This slide provides everyone with a visual about what that would actually look like. So as I mentioned previously, we would continue with our alternate-day schedule. Students would have the opportunity for direct instruction in the morning as well as in the afternoon for their black and white day courses, as well as a follow-up flex time for each of those courses, where they can receive feedback from their teachers or collaborate with their peers or collaborate with their teachers on projects that they're working on to engage themselves further in learning and to immerse themselves in the educational process. We're really proud of how this schedule looks, and I think that it provides the best of both worlds in terms of daily FaceTime with teachers synchronously, as well as daily opportunities for collaboration with peers and teachers. So at this point, I am going to kick it back to Mr. Anthony Gabriel, Director of Learning Innovation, to drive this plan home.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Before I get into the benefits and challenges, I just, I do want to mention, because Mr. Drago alluded to it as to Dr. Best earlier, the committees of teachers and staff that have worked on this, board members, it was really well done across the board. I think they took a lot of different lenses into consideration, but also, as you can see from the different plans for each level, met the needs of the different levels based off of structures that existed, schedules that existed, and making sure that the learning met the needs of the ages and the abilities of the children at those levels. So benefits of the Scenario Three. Obviously, as I mentioned earlier, we tried to be extremely responsive to student-parent and teacher feedback from the spring. With this, it is Centennial Teachers teaching Centennial curriculum. I think that is the biggest bonus and one of the loudest pieces of feedback we heard from the spring is really that desire, even if we are in an online format, having a balance of synchronous and asynchronous learning opportunities. The student is still a member of his Centennial Classroom Community, so they're a part of the district, but they're also part of the classroom community. There's flexibility and opportunity for adapting to blended brick and mortar if and when necessary and available. And then the online environment ensures the safety and well-being of all students and staff. Obviously, there is always the health, you know, concern with COVID. So this, obviously, being at home ensures that that component. Challenges: home life, right? Schedules at home, parents that are working. And the challenges, you know, a lot of the same things we faced in the spring. The social emotional wellness of all stakeholders. This has not been easy on anyone from adults on down. So, you know, that's always a concern with still having to reopen again fully virtual. And then, as Dr. Best mentioned earlier, with the blended option, the reliability and strength of home access and the internet is, you know, always an ongoing challenge that we've looked to, look to try to tackle. Next slide, please. So Scenario Four. This was the CSD Virtual Learning Academy option that Dr. Seidenberger mentioned earlier. This is a fully online option that we really intended for families who, because of, you know, probably health needs mostly, had no desire at, you know, this year or anytime soon for their students to be coming back into the schools. You know, Scenario Three focused on if we have to open online, the hope would be when it is safe and appropriate, we roll back into school into a traditional, either blended or into traditional, like, brick and mortar. This option is, gives us a little bit more flexibility in terms of keeping students at home, whether there's, you know, health concerns for the student or family members and of that nature. Next slide, please. So as Dr. Seidenberger mentioned, we are contracting with Virtual Learning Network. They would be the third-party provider. It is a web-based student portal with a mixture of different types of learning. It is a third-party curriculum, so it is not Centennial's curriculum, but the students still would have access to district resources and district liaison and counselors to lean on, along with the folks from VLN. Next slide, please. Students are provided with the appropriate technology and resources, because they are still a member of Centennial. If they are a high school student, they would receive a William Tanna High School diploma upon graduating, if they stuck this out the entire year. And then parents are provided with a parent portal, you know, where they can help track and help work with, follow the student's progress from there. Next slide. So the benefits of this, obviously, it is still a cyber option while remaining, with the students remaining a student in the Centennial School District, and the online environment ensures the safety while being of all students and employees. You know, the challenges in this, you know, it's not Centennial teachers and not Centennial curriculum, not, the student is not a member of the Centennial Classroom Community. And one of the qualifications of this or one of the restrictions is that the students would have to remain in the Virtual Learning Academy for a set amount of time, either at least a trimester or in the elementary or a semester in the secondary, before they could come back into the district and into traditional brick and mortar, even if it's available earlier, just because with being a third-party curriculum, we'd have to try to find a natural break in the year when there was a good time to get the students back in a way that would help ease the transition. Next slide. So at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Seidenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel. Appreciate it very much. One of the components of the Health and Safety Plan is communications. I'd just like to take a moment to share with the board and the public the kind of things we've started to do, and also want to say that our communications plan is evolving, and we're going to be adding things as we get more information. But just a reminder that one of the first things I felt we needed was to get a bank of concentrated information about COVID-19 and about information that would be very crucial to parents and the public to have. So with Nate's help, we developed the district website, called it our School Opening Resource Center, and we've been adding documents. The latest one we put down was Pennsylvania early warning signs. And I think if you're interested in the topic of positivity, you can find up-to-date information on what that positivity percentage rate is. And we're very close to the 5% in Bucks County. I think it's 4.7 the last seven days. So for those of you who like to do that, watch that kind of thing, we have the information for you. In addition, I made two separate videos. First one was basically introducing myself. Second one was a little update on the plans. We will, by the way, be posting these, our slides tomorrow on the district website, so parents can take a look at them. We also, as I mentioned, we surveyed the staff as well as the parents. We also asked for written responses, comments, questions, et cetera. As the board knows, you have a copy of the parent questions and concerns. We worked on those. We are arduously working to see if we can answer. I think there's well over 100 questions. We thank parents. Those questions were good, they were sharp, they were balanced, they were fair, and we intend to provide straight answers with those, and we will post those as soon as we can. Even if we don't have some that are answered, we'll post the answers that we do have. Also, we made a video. We wanted to show parents and the public what classrooms would look like in two scenarios. People hear these numbers, three feet for social distancing, six feet for social distancing. Where do these things come from? Well, three feet of distance separating desks and social distancing, well, that came from our own very, our own Bucks County medical specialist, Dr. Damsker. The six feet of social distancing, which I think Ms. Bolden referred to, and I think we saw in the hybrid plan, that's the distance, social distance recommended, not only by the Pennsylvania Department of Health, but also by the CDC. So sometimes people get hung up on three feet, six feet. What does that mean? Well, now we have a video, and I'm here to please tonight to tell you that we've had over 5,000 hits on that video. I don't know what Robert Wortenby did, but he's a media star, and if you do get any residuals in that, Robert, that will go to help the budget. I want to thank Nate Ross for his work in helping to produce all these documents. And I can tell the board with, with very clear standards, we have talked internally about having vignettes, much like we heard tonight from Dr. Best, Ms. Perkins, and Mr. Goldar. We would be working with Nate to create videos of those presentations and explain more about each one of our scenarios moving forward. In addition, as I said before, we're going to be posting the comprehensive questions and answers regarding parent concerns and more information as we get it. So what's next? Well, as I mentioned earlier in our presentation, we do expect this Health and Safety Plan to evolve, to continue to improve, to improve, to get, to be strengthened as we move forward. We will continue to refine these plans. And of course, everybody's asking the $64,000 question, what are we going to do? And as I mentioned to the board, I believe that we have a couple days of hard conversations internally. For today, I spoke just about every principle. We've had cabinet meetings, believe me. We've had these discussions at the Bucks County U. We have two meetings a week with all superintendents in Bucks County. We've had four county meetings with superintendents from Delaware, Chester, Montgomery County. It's all we seem to be doing is discussing what scenarios we're going to be recommending to our board. So after saying that, I'll probably be in a position to issue a recommendation next week if we have a special board meeting to consider that recommendation. So, Mr. Dixon, I'd like to turn it back to you, and if you have any questions, please feel forward, feel free to forward them to me.
Okay. So this is the moment for the board to comment on the presentations. I would ask folks, because we have so many community comments to read once our comments have concluded, to try to keep board comments too short and minimalistic at this point. I will say one thing here, which is that, again, you know, we're looking at advancing a plan tonight that would not be our final plan, not even selecting a final plan, but simply picking, you know, which of the three we want to at least have in the hopper, and even that's somewhat subject to change. And with respect to, you know, what the community is facing, I think we're all very sensitive. You know, we live in a, we live in a community that, you know, people talk about diversity, and there's different kinds of diversity. Obviously, we have a racially and ethnically diverse community, but we also have an economically diverse community. And therefore, we know that on the one hand, we have many families who are fortunate enough to be in positions where, you know, you have either a stay-at-home parent or two parents with stable professional jobs that can be principally done online, and so that going fully virtual is not particularly a hardship for those families, but at the same, not that it's not a hardship, but it's something that they can weather. But of course, we simultaneously have families who depend on the school to have the children have someplace to go so that they can have an income. Simultaneously, we have plenty of families who have people at home or are worried for themselves or their children, because they have pre-existing conditions that COVID exacerbates if you get it. And if you bring it home, it's a problem. So we're really weighing, you know, basically, as I said at the outset of this, not trying to pick the best option, but trying to select what's the least bad, given all the circumstances. So having said that, Mr. Panofsky.
I'm going to be very brief. The first thing I want to say is that the members of the board have gotten quite a few emails on this topic, and I do want to let the people who have been emailing us know that, at least for me, I'm reading everyone. I haven't responded due to time reasons right now, but when, at least, I can speak for a lot of us, we read these emails that come into us, we listen to what you say. Where I stand right now, it's very, very difficult for me to foresee supporting a fully in-person reopening, seeing how trends are going, seeing the distress it will cause to multiple factors. So for me, I can't imagine doing a fully in-person elsewhere. I think I'm going to kind of listen to what Dr. Seidenberger has to say and look at all the information we have as we have it. As we've all said, this stuff is changing rapidly. That's all I wanted to say.
Any other board members want to comment at this time, or do we just want to get on reading the community comments?
This is funny. A couple of things that I think would be very interesting. I don't know if Mr. Wortenby has the ability to bring that video up that he filmed, because I think that would be helpful for everybody. So that's one thing. You know, as John said, we have all gotten emails. I had gotten primarily emails from teachers, and I see a lot of concern, you know, about going back, you know, and the spacing and all of that, you know, is going to come up, you know, during the questionnaire, you know, period. But I think it's important, you know, we will have the ability to show it if Mr. Wortenby has that, you know, ability to bring that up. I think it will be helpful. It's only two and a half minutes long, so it's a short piece of information that's helpful.
Well, what I would suggest, and sorry to interrupt, Mr. Godikson, but on that point, I think the video would be helpful, and I think we're going to read 27 community comments, so we should have plenty of time. I would think, can we work on that while we're reading the community comments so that maybe when they're concluded, we actually have to take a vote in the new business section? Maybe we could play it, you know, prior to that or something like that.
I absolutely agree with you there. That's not a problem. I just felt it was something that was worth.
Oh, no, no, no. I was saying, like, good, we have some built-in time here to try to get that done.
And comment-wise, you know, I was on the brick and mortar committee. You know, I mean, I think it was amazing what we did, what we came up with, so that was fantastic. But, you know, when you get down to those challenges at the end, that's going to make it very, very difficult, in my opinion, to move forward. But I think we also have to keep in mind that every day changes, you know, in the community, you know? So we get one day with a lot of, you know, COVID, you know, incidents in the county. We have, you know, days that's been lower. We don't know quite in what direction we are moving. And I think for that reason, being fluid, you know, with having choices, we make one, we may make one choice tonight. That choice might look very different, you know, on the 18th of August or even closer to opening day, but we do have to come up with some sort of. of plan.
Mrs. Brancato.
I just want to ask a question. I don't really have a comment. Do we have a hard date that we're going to tell these parents what we're doing by? Because there's very concerned parents, because if they have to make other arrangements, we can't really tell them at the last minute. That really complicates their lives. So do we have a hard date that we will be telling them the plan for the return to school?
Yes. Yes. Yes, Mr. Dixon. As I mentioned before, I'm, I'm, I'll be ready to make a recommendation next Tuesday.
Okay. So, so that's, I just want to make sure I, because, because I'm being bombarded as we speak. So you're saying August 4, we will have a hard decision for these people, what we're going to do, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And thank you. You're, I would echo your concerns. That has, that, the idea that we really need to let people know, we have to do internal planning, too.
Sure.
And I'm glad we waited this long, because things have been changing. Fleming was absolutely right. Things are shifting virtually every day. But as of Friday or Monday morning, I'm going to give you my best thinking and writing, and we'll make a recommendation. We'll see what we can do together to move this forward.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I'm just going to urge board members to be in contact with Dr. Seidenberger and let, let them know if they observed anything. And these plans that are either objectionable or possibly modifying any one of the plans, so that if there is a need to make changes on August 4, we're not, we're not holding the administration and giving them a surprise. I, I'm watching what's happening around the state. As of today, the State School Boards Association is aware of 53 school districts that are going entirely virtual with in-house programs. And I think we need to look at all options. I'm not sure that all of them are on the table. So I would just encourage each board member who has feelings in that direction to make Dr. Seidenberger aware of them, so he can discuss them with this cabinet. And we're in a good place to move forward, as Ms. Brancato asked on Tuesday evening, because she's absolutely correct. The parents do need to know exactly where we're headed.
Mr. Miller, since you, do you have a moment here? I, I know that one thing that may control here, and for the folks who are listening or watching on TV, is that there still exists the possibility, last I heard, that the governor may eventually simply order a statewide virtual reopening. Is that something that, is, is there any update on that from that you, to your knowledge?
If I, if I do that, I'm going to make it a personal opinion. And if anybody's watching this, I'm probably going to be. I, I think that the administration is playing this, let the school boards decide to the hill, so that nobody has to stick their neck out. Upper Dublin School District last night made a decision to go full virtual to at least January 4. They weren't planning to do that last week. Ben Salem School District announced that they're going to go for virtual. They weren't planning to do that last week. So I think as things are moving forward here, as community members and staff and faculty are making their opinions, you know, we might even hear some things tonight that lead us to want to make a choice on Tuesday that's not on the table today. So I, that's why I'm saying, whatever we are thinking as the elected representatives or our community, we need to make Dr. Seidenberger aware of that, so he can at least have the cabinet consider them and reply to them.
Dr. Seidenberger, I assume you have not heard anything from the governor's office or from the PDE or from other contacts that would suggest that there's any decision imminent or forthcoming?
It is a constant topic among the superintendent's discussion. Are we going to hear or not here? And so, believe me, if I would hear, you would know within minutes. Okay?
Okay. Mrs. Crosson.
I just wanted to stress that the local colleges, Temple University, felt it not safe, and they're doing it online. And they're older, more mature kids. So I'm not quite sure how we're going to be sending seven and eight, nine year olds, you know, off to school when, you know, 21 and 22 year olds, it's not safe for. I mean, it's, it's just logic right now. The safety has to come first. We really do have to focus on the safety issue. Unfortunately, I know we have to get the kids back into school, but their, their safety has to be, has to come first.
Mrs. Brancato.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, we're having our school board meetings virtually. So if it's not safe for us, why would we think it's safe for the kids? Right?
I, I mean, I, yeah. I, I think that the issue, and not that I, I don't, you know, I, I have not rendered an opinion, and I'm not, I don't exactly know how I'm going to go. But I think that the issue is that, I don't know that it's necessarily, the people who want a full opening aren't necessarily thinking in terms just of safety, but they're thinking about the whole picture of their lives. And if this is a terrible, this is a terrible decision that everybody has to face, you know?
Mr. Dixon, I don't think there's going to be a good answer, no matter what. It's not going to be, we're just not going to pick the right, you know, the best answer, because there is no best answer in this scenario.
Right.
And I feel horrible for, for everybody who's not going to like whatever decision we pick.
Yeah. There's no way to make everybody happy or be.
There's no winners. No winners at all.
All right, Mr. Martin. Or, well, Mr. Miller, I'm sorry you had your hand up there.
Yeah, just pointing out, you know, there's, there's no way to ensure compliance here. And with all the planning of the Major League Baseball, three days into the season, teams are now sitting on their, on their bench and haven't even had their home openers yet. So, you know, we need to be very careful about what we decide on Tuesday.
Mr. Martin.
Seems to me that we can't ignore the fact that the majority of parents who pay the bills and who are more worried about their children than any of us are, have expressed their desire for bricks and mortar opening. I think we cannot ignore that. If there were to be a bricks and mortar opening, wouldn't there also be an alternative for those parents who did not wish their children to attend? And for the staff members who feel that they might have some issue with returning to the building full time to work? So I think as we go forward, we have to make sure that we take into consideration what the majority of parents have expressed their desire for.
Dr. Seidenberger, did you want to comment on that, that concept of some kind of split the difference where some people can do fully virtual, some people can do, you know, some version?
We're going to, we're going to take a look at that internally. The problem is, do we, do we have enough families? And, you know, we may have to extend that a little bit beyond Tuesday. We can make a recommendation, but it takes some time to look at that. We would probably need to issue another parent survey. This one would have to be, parents would have to tell us if they'd like to do that, yes or no. I don't think we'd have any problems staffing that program. It's just a matter, would we get enough youngsters to make, to make a class? As you saw, we would certainly use one of the models, one of the, either the hybrid model or the virtual model to implement a program like that. Again, would we have enough youngsters? And the only thing I could tell you, if we did, came up with a program like that, it would not just be for each elementary school. We would have to take youngsters from, from each of the elementary schools, probably to make a class. But we'll see what those numbers look like. Okay?
Mr. Miller, do you have a new hand up? Or is that an old hand not raised, not unraised? Thank you. So just one last thing, and then we're going to go to the community comments. So I don't see anymore. I just want to be clear, and I, and, you know, and this is, and Mrs. Brancato, I know, as you say, the children's safety does come first, and that is for sure the case. And I just want to be clear, and I know you didn't mean it this way, but for those folks out there who do want their kids to go to school, I'm sure they're equally concerned about their children's safety. But safety has a multitude of meanings. And we, I think as a board, have to be cognizant of that. Some of it is physically safe, but there's also, you know, if, if you're at home and mom and dad can't work, there's economic safety and things like that that factor into helping people think about this problem. And that's the issue, right? That the problem presents differently for different people. So having said that, Mr. Ross, can we, can we begin reading these community comments? And I would ask that ordinarily, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to have the board members, you know, react to each comment. But with so many, I think we needed to read them straight through.
Right.
And then we can respond to them generally when it's over.
Okay. Yeah, there is more than 27 now. There's around 30 comments.
I thought, I thought by rule, comments for this meeting were closed before 5:00 PM. But I mean, that's fine. If it's three.
No, we, we actually opened them at 5:00 PM.
Oh, I see. I see.
So any, any comments that aren't read, either they didn't qualify because they came before 5:00 PM, or they didn't have an address, or they were inappropriate?
That's fine. I just, I misunderstood the rule for tonight. That's fine.
No problem. Let's get to the first comment. It's Danielle Shillett at from 449 East Street Road in Warmminster. Thank you for taking the time to hear comments from stakeholders today. I trust that this consideration goes beyond performative expectations. And the comments submitted truly inform your decisions tonight. I am writing today as both the parent of a third grade McDonald Elementary student with autism and gifted designations, and as the director of innovation of a school network in Philadelphia, principal certification in PA. I believe that scenario three, virtual learning for all students taught by our own, our own school's teachers is not only the option that will yield the richest teaching and learning for both students and educators, but it will also the only safe and sane option, given the surreal content. Here are five key reasons why. Number one, all three of the other options would cause significant disruption in a course of correction were required. In person or hybrid would be disrupted to go fully virtual the moment a building had a single confirmed case, and the virtual academy option would be disrupted should a safe return to school later this year become viable.
Mr. Ross, can I time you out for just a second? Because of the volume of comments, we have a three minute comment rule. If somebody's email is going to take more than, and I heard five reasons, and I, I appreciate the time and thought that was put into it, can you either just keep an eye on the time or, you know, and or condense the email, you know, as you're reading along, if you see it's going to well exceed a three minute reading?
This will, this will well exceed three minutes.
Right. So that's what I'm talking about. We can't give 25 minutes to one person with the volume of comments that we have.
How about I jump to the end?
I mean, use your best judgment. I realize, once again, we're, we're in a forum that does not allow for perfection. So.
Right.
If somebody were in front of the microphone, they'd be cut off when they reached the three minutes. So I think that's the direction we should go. I'm wondering if we would consider looking at emails that are alike and just reading the name of the person and the general comment if it's alike.
Okay. I mean, a lot of them are alike?
Sure. I think that we want, if everybody took, for everyone who took the time to write in, I'm willing to sit here and listen to their name and three minutes of what they have to say. What I need to make sure that we're controlling is we, you know, I'm sure some people kept their comments relatively brief, and others, I'm sure, I by myself, by the way, myself, I'm guilty of these things. I tend to write a lot when I write. So I appreciate that people put that kind of time and thought and energy into it. But, you know, we obviously can't just give, you know, that kind of forum. We wouldn't if we were meeting in person. And so we can't do it here. Whether or not, I mean, no, your, your point is well taken. If you just want to, Mr. Ross, to keep, take the judgment out of it, just read for three minutes, and when you hit three minutes, stop. Maybe that's the first way.
And they'll all be forwarded to the board afterwards?
Yeah.
Of course.
We can do that. We can do that. I.
Is everybody, before, before Mr. Ross continues, is everybody okay with that as a solution? Just read for three minutes, and when you hit three minutes, stop? Thumbs up from board members if that's okay?
I'd actually like to hear what they have to say. I mean, they've taken the time to reach out to us. I think, I think they deserve to be heard.
I agree with Mrs. Crosson.
In their entirety?
Listen, they took, they took the time to be on this meeting. They hung in there when we didn't get it going on time. So we're not talking about, you know, a real estate transaction. We're talking about their most precious gifts.
I understand.
I think that we need to hear them out.
Is not going to make or break us.
Well, I mean, let me put it this way. By rule, the district has a, a rule that says we cannot conduct new business after 10:30 at night, I believe it is. And we had.
Then let's, then let's start listening and let's us stop talking.
But if we give some, hold on, if we give somebody 15 minutes, then somebody else doesn't get their comment read because we hit the, we hit the mark.
It's 10 minutes is, or 10 o'clock is the policy.
Okay. So, I mean, we can, we can, we can have Mr. Ross read the, the current email in its entirety. But if we do that with everyone that goes over, I pretty much feel it seems highly likely that some people will not get their pieces read at all.
Understood. Okay.
So three minutes.
Do you want me to do three minutes?
With that in mind, three minutes?
We're going to get these all emailed to us. So if you read for three minutes, the board members will get to see the comments in their entirety, even if we don't get to hear them.
All right. I have, I have a stopwatch here.
Thank you.
Would you like me to continue on the first email?
Yes. And give her, give her, since we, I didn't stop, give her two minutes from where we're standing. I think you were reading for about a minute.
All right. Number two, scenario three would help leaders prioritize teacher growth through high quality professional learning on a rigorous pedagogy and assessment best practices necessary in a virtual context, instead of spending the bulk of professional learning time practicing soon to be obsolete safety protocols for physical distancing and spending time cleaning and disinfecting classroom spaces and shared materials. Three, in person options, scenario one and two are fundamentally unsafe. They are predicated on perfect family community compliance with screening protocols for COVID-19 and hampered by the state's recent two month delay rollback of even the regular immunization documentation requirements. Add to that the reality that our facilities, excuse me, that our facilities were not designed with HVAC filtering systems to combat the circulating viral aerosols indoors, and the reality that not all of our students will be able to keep masks on. Even beginning a day with a reasonable assumption of safe public health conditions seems entirely out of reach. Or even if we assume that in person learning were fully safe and the district adopted the most conservative six foot model for the classroom spacing, and successfully orchestrated hallway, bathroom, and lunch protocols to be fully no touch and physical distance, that learning environment would only be conducive to shallow, dyadic learning experiences in rope practice due to physical constraints. Any deeper learning, creative content development, and authentic collaboration would be harder onsite in these conditions, that it would be virtually, be virtually where students could move around as needed, access real hands on materials and manipulatives, monthly pickups, and be physically comfortable. Five, virtual academy or a canned curriculum platform like the ingenuity options the district used in an emergency context last spring. That's time. All right. Next email is from Jennifer Mallon of Cerre Road, Southampton, PA. To whom it may concern, while I don't have, while I don't yet have a child in our school district, I feel compelled to share my perspective, as have many family members and friends who both work within the district and attended schools. The Norristown School District Superintendent stated this morning, as he announced schools will be virtually until January. I will not be the superintendent that loses one child or staff member this year because we chose to open schools. School districts all over our area are recognizing this as they continue to vote all virtual to start in September. It is simply, it simply isn't safe to put our children and staff in a situation where people could potentially die. There are too many unknowns. Children aged 10 and up are just as likely as adults to get sick and spread the virus. Please lead by example and put the health and safety of Centennial students and staff at the forefront. Every life is valuable. Losing just one life. Every life is valuable. Losing just one life to this horrific virus because we chose to killersly open schools is unacceptable. Inevitably, people in our district will contact this virus, causing constant shutdowns each time a person gets sick. We should not be returning until we know it is safe to do so, and now is not the time as cases continue to rise. While choosing to stay virtual may be more logistically challenging at first, I truly hope that we can all agree that a short amount of time being inconvenient but safe is far greater than a lifetime of regret from haste. Thank you for listening to my options. I'll be paying close attention to the decisions made and hope that those who ultimate decision it is will err on the side of caution and care, uh, rather than convenience. Jennifer Mall. All right. Next is from Maria Mahaffey, Willow Dale Elementary School Teacher kindergarten. Uh, good evening, members of the school board and community. My name is Maria Mahaffey and I have been a teacher in Centennial School District for over 20 years. As you know, I emailed board members on Friday evening supporting online learning as a district. There are a few articles that I recently read with the important information that I'd like to highlight. In an article written on July 23rd regarding Tennessee schools, it states that over 7,500 children ages five to 18 have been diagnosed with COVID-19. They believe that this is a great underestimation. They have been, there have been three student deaths so far. One would be too many. There is a huge concern whether those students will spread it throughout the community. Two other articles I like to refer to regarding California and North Carolina cases, there are nearly 1,000 COVID-19 cases reported in childcare facilities across California. In an article updated on July 24th, it speaks of COVID-19 clusters and childcare in school settings in North Carolina. See, we may have 25 children in our classrooms throughout the course of a week, but many of these children are not isolated in their homes. Many attend before and after school care uh, at facilities each day. Our students have also been exposed to other members of their household, extended families and friends. Many of our children have grandparents residing in the same house with them. All of these exposures can lead to extremely frightening outcomes. We cannot realistically ask children, especially the younger ones, to stay in their seats for six hours a day, wearing masks with little room for movement, not even attending specials or walking to the cafeteria. Where is the student interaction? How can a teacher not hug his or her student when they're upset and scared? As educators, we want children to find love in coming to school. This setting that we have created in the hybrid method is complete opposite. We tell our students daily that they should feel happy and safe in school. During drills, we have them go to their safer spots because we teach them that school is one of the safest places they could be. This is not the case and currently for students or teachers. No teacher should ever be fearful of jeopardizing their own health or that of their family by coming to work each day. We too are parents. We too need to figure out childcare, but we are not here to be a family's childcare provider. Our career is to educate and share the love of learning. Nowhere in Centennial's mission statement does it say that learning needs to come from inside four walls. Safety is always and shall be our number one priority. It is my hope that we can return to the classroom when it is safe for all students and staff, but for now we need to start our year using the virtual learning method. And that was Maria Mahaffey. Uh, next email from Corey C. Varelli, um, of 42 Valentine Road, Iberland, PA. Uh, if, if school is in any way virtual, there needs to be teaching for all children via Zoom, Skype, FaceTime, or any digital platform by their actual teachers. The way virtual school went from March on was awful. Kids need live teachers in order to learn. There needs to be a lesson plan at home and not some half put together, it's the spark Odyssey program. That program did not encourage the active in, active and new learning. Uh, it is problematic to have a parent who is not a qualified teacher and who is also working full-time to be responsible for teaching school content to their children. Uh, kids need full attention to learn, which working parents cannot provide whether while either at work during that time or working at home during that time. To summarize, I know we are in difficult situation, but please, if there is a virtual school, we need actual teaching by teachers to mimic the classroom setting. Thank you. All right. Uh, next email is from Daniela Lowitzky of 127 Kings or Drive, Southampton. I have three children in the district, one going into 11th grade tenant, one going into eighth grade, a clinger, and my youngest getting ready to start kindergarten at Davis. I would love for my kids to go back to school and resume their normal lives filled with seeing their teachers in person, getting to be with their friends and taking part in extracurriculars. My youngest is special needs as well due to autism and developmental delays. So receiving special services is very important for him. I want schools to reopen badly. My kids want schools to reopen. Yet I'm writing you today to strongly asking, asking we proceed with the utmost of caution and continue remote learning until we have a more, have more assurance of safety for our school, for our kids, their families, our teachers, their families and all the staff that goes into running a school. There is too much uncertainty with this virus. Every day we find out some new fact that makes it more serious and dangerous than we previously thought. Hospitalization of children's has gone up 23% in Florida. That's hospitalization, not new cases. While kids may get more mild cases, that is not always the case. I don't think even the death of one child is worth the risk. And that's not counting their families and teachers. Even those people that do not die, we are finding to have long-term effects to their health. Uh, we don't know what impacts to their health there will be in the future. How can we proceed and put so many people at risk where, whereas much we don't know, when there is much we don't know. Kids being kids, especially the younger ones, I doubt that social distancing and masks would be possible and effective as it would be for grown adults. Teachers should not have the fear for their lives or their loved ones. None of us should. I implore you to continue remote learning for the fall, winter, potentially reevaluate our situation for the spring, depending on any new findings, treatments, vaccines. The development of kids is important, but we are talking about lives here. Moving along. Um, next email is from Jessica Alberts, 90 Toll Drive, Southampton, Pennsylvania. My family currently has two children enrolled in Davis Elementary School, while the health and safety of the students and staff are utmost importance. I think it goes without saying that the quality of our children's education is also very important. The virtual learning platform that was used for the second half of the last school year was nothing short of a joke. My children learned nothing. Uh, we're not engaged in dreaded taking part in virtual learning. While I understand that it is, that a full reopening is not likely in the cards, I believe that we need to have the kids in classrooms at least a few days a week until we can go back full time. Further, a fully virtual program will severely impact the families with two working parents. How are we supposed to teach our children work full-time and afford additional childcare? This community will suffer greatly if parents lose their jobs because they cannot work due to school closures. Has the board considered renting trailers or outbuildings for overflow to lower class sizes? Using St. John Bosco's vacant school as an overflow school, uh, setting up the gym and cafeteria into classrooms, we need these children in front of teachers, not computer screens. All right. Uh, next email is from Kiri Sellers, uh, 50, 593 New Road in Southampton. I would like to know what arrangements will be made for children whose parents work if schools do not reopen as normal. My husband and I are both first responders and have two children that attend the school district. We work unpredictable, long hours and rely on the school and aftercare programs to keep our children educated and safe when we are unable to do so. The last few months have been extremely difficult for, uh, with the virtual learning program and our children have su- have suffered and have fallen behind in their normal abilities due to the lack of physical education instruction. My husband and I are not educators and we lack the skill to properly teach our children the required curriculum. If the schools do not return to the normal learning environment this September, I would like to know what percentage of the school tax dollars would be returned to the residents so that parents like myself will be able to afford to hire tutors so that our children do not suffer from the lack of educational needs that you uh, are suggesting to provide. Very truly yours, Kiri Sellers. Next comment is from James Alberts, 90 Toll Drive. Uh, wait a second. This could be the same email. No. Okay. Uh, James Alberts, 92 Road, Southampton. While I understand the health and safety of the staff and students as first priority, I strongly urge the board to consider all available options and utilize all available tax dollar resources in order to get our kids back to school safely to start the school year. Uh, these children need to be in front of teachers and socialize with their classmates. This is an important part of early childhood development and they will never get this time back. Additionally, I'm in a household with two working parents providing the education. My children is not achievable without my children physically going to school. Sitting in front of a computer screen is not engaging for my children and they have no interest in learning that way. Every day was a battle to get them to log in. They want to go to school to learn from a teacher and be with their peers. If the decision is made to use virtual learning platform at any point in the upcoming school year, will the platform be better than the virtual learning platform used last year or will the teachers provide virtual interaction lessons each day for their class in order for the children to actually learn? My two children in Davis Elementary learned nothing from the 20 minutes a day it took to complete the assignments on the Odyssey platform used last year. In my opinion, the platform used was completely inadequate. There have been plenty of time to prepare a much better virtual learning platform for the children. If that is the unfortunate way we are going. Additionally, if virtual learning is decided upon, who would be the person of contact in order to discuss uh, prurient the school taxes I pay each year? Uh, after seeing the platform utilized last year by Centennial, especially Davis Elementary, I believe my tax money could be utilized appropriately and could, and I could purchase a much better program to educate my children if need be. Thanks for your time and I hope the right decision is being made for our children. Okay. Next comment is from Darren Zichel, 681 Newtown Road, Warminster. My concern is that the school district will not fulfill my child's education for the full five days a week with transportation extracurricular activities in the MBIT school program that she will be attending this year. How much am I being refunded of my school taxes? I pay $6,377.04 in school taxes alone, which has gone up significantly every year in 13 years I have lived in Warminster. I'm concerned about all the children that are being abused and neglected at home to where going to school is a safe haven for them. Kids need to be kids and have their school, full school experience to prepare them for the future. Uh, this message is from Christie Armstrong of 45 Springfield Drive, Southampton. Uh, hello. I just wanted to say that I think that we should absolutely not be putting our children and teachers at risk by requiring them to go back to school. Pandemic is just getting worse and it doesn't make sense at all. The virtual learning is not ideal, but it's not something that we can, that can get us through until it's safe. Please consider the safety of our students, teachers and their families when making a decision. Thank you. Uh, next comment is from Gene Price of Gorse and Drive in Warminster. Good evening. I understand that you are only looking out for the safety of our children, but there should be some consideration about children with IEPs and 504s about going back to school five days a week. These children need their services. My son is legally blind and is a Braille reader going into the third grade at Willow Dale. The services consist of vision service, uh, orientated air mobility, PT and OT. Even though virtual schooling last year in ESY over the summer went well, it is not ideal for my son. My son would get frustrated with his technology, Focus 40, which is refreshable Braille display and jaws on the Windows computer. Especially when he had to troubleshoot something and his vision teacher could not see or, uh, get her hands on the equipment to help him. I really hope that you think about these children and do the best by them and get them back to school to five days a week. Thank you for taking time to read my concerns. All right. Next comment is from Bill Newhouse, 726 Willow Street, Southampton. I'm writing in regards to the opening of schools. Although I prefer five days a week in school, I realize that may not be a possibility. As alternatives are being processed, please don't just think of a week as five days. Tenant went to block scheduling and should be thought of as that way. Maybe follow that schedule, two days on, then two days off, two, then two days on, then two days off. In this scenario, kids would be in person every other class. If five days a week are not possible, please consider this for the high school at least. Thank you. Uh, next message is from Jennifer Kocher, 30 Woodlawn Road, Warminster. I just wanted to reiterate uh, the request for full support of the dual language program at McDonald. The board left that off the meeting, uh, mostly agreeing that the pilot program should shift into a fully funded program. If the dual language program cannot be changed from the pilot to program, I will have no choice but to remove my child. Full support should consist of, but not be limited to commitment to fully staffing, purchasing a dual language curriculum and teacher training. I do not want to advocate for the program to continue for his cohort after year after year. I want to thank the board and Mr. Ortiz for their passion and commitment to this wonderful program at McDonald. Your efforts in attempting to keep it sustainable. As far as returning to school, if we do go virtual or hybrid, please make major changes to the virtual learning program. Students do need to, do need school every day. All subjects taught and accountability for work completion and progress. Thank you. Okay. Next comment is from Sharon Knowles of Huntington Hollow, Southampton. Uh, I read that the reason there is not much information about kids getting the virus is because we have kept them away from people who could be infected for months by now, not taking them to grocery, not taking them grocery shopping to the pharmacy, et cetera. Uh, will the online curriculum for students who will not be returning in the fall for in-person learning be the same as what it was the in-person students are learning? I want to make sure my child will be on the same level as the other students in his or her grade. Thank you. Uh, next comment is from Nancy Ishinger, uh, 246 Kent Road, Warminster. Children have been using, children have been using digital technology during these spring and summer months for different purposes other than a learning platform. Behavioral conditioning at the screen makes it difficult for students to treat the screen primarily as an instrument of learning as opposed to an instrument of diversion. If, if an all-digital virtual platform or even a hybrid format is chosen for return to school, what is your plan for the Centennial School District teachers to offer live teachings if you choose virtual learning? Have you considered the pre-existing advantage of children with an involved parent? And how this will expand and divide between children who may require extra help or do not learn at the same pace without guidance? All right. Moving on. Uh, this next comment is from Donna Kilbride of 301 Tally Ho Drive, Warminster, PA. I believe that the health and wellbeing of students, faculty and staff is most important. As COVID-19 cases are on the rise, I do not think this is the time to bring everyone back to school. I feel the district should move the first half of the year to online learning. Next comment is from Jim Farrell, 549 Winding Way, Warminster, PA. Uh, I believe the option that would work best will have the overwhelming majority of support from the teachers and staff. Since they are on the front line, it will be their confidence that will drive us to success. Next comment is from Glenn Berman, Ballast Circle, Southampton. How will distancing be maintained during elementary school recess outside versus inside? Any of the distance learning options more so for younger children with working parents suggested to keeping children busy during the prep periods? Could you elaborate further on the VLA options, specifically the amount of live versus recorded instruction or, as you note, synchronous versus asynchronous? All right. Next comment is from Lisa Farley, 534 Ninth Ave, Warminster. How can we consider reopening with numbers on the rise? Many other districts are doing virtual and will reassess at a later date. How, how will they social distance on the bus? What about students with IEPs? Who spend time in general ed and special ed and get pulled out of class for therapy? That's a lot of exposure to different people. If we, if we are open, can the students still get a lunch provided by the cafeteria? Will we be made aware if a student or teacher becomes infected? Uh, right. Next. All right. The next comment is from Rick Tryer of 826 Davisville Road, Warminster. As a concerned parent, I've read numerous notices about different plans for kids going back to school come September. My son Austin is going to be a senior at Tenet High School. I don't think the kids want to be wearing face shields. I think homeschool or online schooling for the next three months or so is the best way to do it until we get this virus under control. If one child catches the coronavirus in school, then the whole school will be shut down. What are my options? Uh, what are my options? Also a consideration, we are paying a lot of taxes, so there has to be more than one plan. Something that is safe for our children and the community in our pockets, please advise. Thank you. Uh, next message is from Jen Brennan, 365 Newtown Road, Warminster. I want to comment on the new superintendent besides his impressive. I'm gonna also.
Yeah, put that aside, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Put this one aside. All right, the next comment is from Celeste Silva. My question is, in the projected reopening plans, is there anything planned for if a student feels like they should stay home and possibly doing their work from home without actually missing school and being marked absent and just logging in or something? This would be if a parent or student doesn't feel that they are well, but no fever, but you can't be sure. You may just not be able to tell if it's your normal not feeling well from a cough or cold or COVID, and you are well enough to work, but want to be cautious. Always in previous years, I've sent my kids to school if they just have a cough or cold unless they really feel bad, because otherwise they would be out way too much. People seem to emphasize having a fever or not, but the truth is, not everyone with COVID has gotten a fever. And if you could have a cough but no fever and still have COVID. All right, next comment is from James Amato, 40 Brewster Drive, Ivyland, PA. Open the school's full attendance brick and mortar. Teachers need to be in their classroom with their students, teaching them as they are paid to do. Many parents cannot afford to take time off work to teach their own kids. And also full transportation. We paid a ridiculous amount in the school taxes to pay teacher salaries and the transport of our kids. Enough is enough. The next comment is from Maria Unigat. Scenario two, what should parents do in this scenario? Quit their jobs in order to be with kids three days and spend time on homework online? Who will provide the families that can't afford to quit the job? Parents have to follow the remote instructions with their kids to complete the homework. Who can promise that the level of education is going to be the same as being in school? Kids will forget whatever they did a day ago by being in school only for two days. If kids will be engaged with staff the same way that they were engaged since, the same way they were engaged since March, it is not a good decision. The online program is horrible. The kids will be remote, the classroom should be online the same hours as it is in school. Kids should see their teacher and whatever the teacher is explaining. It should all be live, not taped or recorded. Google Classroom is not working for the kids. Parents have constantly be, have to constantly be next to the kids to make sure that they follow through. Scenario four, we shouldn't be paying taxes if we go with this scenario. I would rather hire someone to educate my kids and buy a good program. Kids should be in school. Do you want kids to grow up and have depression because they have no memories and communications? Kids should be socializing all the time. Schools should be open. A few more comments that came in. The next comment is from Christine Halbauer of 519 Harding Circle. We are in August. When will the decision be made and why isn't it being discussed tonight? Next message is from Kristen Nicoletti, 1145 Meadowbrook Road, Southampton, PA. How will the district handle children that are scheduled for evaluations when school begins so to receive potential services that are needed? Without these evaluations, this could further hinder a child's success for the school year, most specifically if not back in buildings, delaying those evaluations may have a great impact on these children. Hold on one moment. All right, next message is from Ashley Capaldi. Good evening, please, please consider the mental health of the children. They need to be in school. Please also consider parents have work. Safety is extreme, extremely more than just a cleaning, than just cleaning a school, what the children need mentally from a school day and in-person learning. Let me see if there's any left. All right, I'm gonna go back to the. All right, this message is from Jen Brennan, 365 Newtown Road, Warminster. I wanted to comment on the new superintendent. Besides his impressive background, it will be inspiring to the minority community, especially the black community.
Excuse, excuse me one second. Before we read that, we need to do that agenda item.
Okay.
And then, then we'll read. So are there any more comments based on that presentation?
No, the, the comments that weren't read either came in before, or they were inappropriate, or they didn't have an address.
Okay. All right, so rather than address all those comments individually, we're going to, we have an item in the agenda that deals with the plan, so I think we should move to that. And we'll just say one thing, because I did hear a question in there that can be simply answered about the timing of things. Tonight, again, we are voting to approve what the superintendent and the various committees working together are recommending as a whole, committees that were established by the superintendent to pursue all the various options. We're picking three, I believe that three of the four being recommended to move forward for their consideration with a final plan to be voted on a week from today. Is that correct, Dr. Seidenberger?
That is correct. If you would check your plans, there are four options available to school districts. We marked three at this time. And again, that's because of the respect for our planning teams, okay?
Right. So again, if you're interested in what the final plan will be, there will be another special meeting Tuesday, August 4th. With that, let's move on to the business, new business items in the agenda. Since each one is of specific importance, I don't think I'm going to bother with pulling things. Mrs. Crossen, do you just want to go ahead and read 4.1? Start there.
New business, be it resolved, that Centennial School District Board of School Directors appoints to be determined as superintendent of the Centennial School District, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the superintendent contract.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we need to amend the motion to fill in the name?
I thought Colleen's earlier saying.
Hold on one sec. Two people were talking at once. Who answered that question?
Revised agenda was sent to the board with the name. The name does need to be read in the resolution. Thus, we're not hiring anybody.
Okay. Mrs. Crossen, in that case, can you reread it with the correct, with the name inserted, You're on mute, Mrs. Crossen. You're on mute.
Thank you. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors appoints Dana T. Bedden as superintendent of the Centennial School District, subject, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the superintendent contract.
Right. Second, thank you, Mr. Miller. Before I recognize folks, I will say that, you know, this was a lengthy process that the entire board went through. We interviewed, we, we, we engage with the IU, as everybody who follows these meetings knows, to conduct our process. The IU did a tremendous job working with us all the way through, from the outset to the conclusion. And in particular, you know, we were all very impressed with the quality of candidate. They were able to recruit into applying for the position. We had a number of very fine applicants. I think everybody was impressed by different people for different reasons. I myself, you know, I know that my final ranking, the person we selected tonight was actually first for me, but it was close. You know what I mean? It was not, it was not, it was no blowout by any stretch of the imagination. Having said that, Dr. Bedden, we're very lucky to get him. He brings years and years and years of experience at a time when that's among things we really need, given the crisis situation that we're in. And he is uniquely positioned to press forward on some of Centennial's real building strengths that we have a reputation for across the state, especially around equity. But he also has a solid educational track record as well, and he has a wonderful business management record in terms of, you know, being responsible to the taxpayers and how the money is spent. So overall, we have in Dr. Bedden a really great candidate. We're very proud to get him, and it's not costing the taxpayers anything more than what was already in the budget. The budget is absolutely neutral with this move. There's no change. So we're really in a great position making this hire. So we'll be glad to welcome Dr. Bedden to our district. This is Broncado.
Andrew, are you saying we're not allowed to pull anything? Is that what you said?
We're just gonna go through them one by one. 4.1, 4.2, 4.3.
So we're not, we're not allowed to pull anything if we have something to say? I'm just asking.
No, no, on each agenda item, people will have an opportunity to speak. But rather than pull, pull one would be if we were going to approve like two of them at once, you know? But I think each one deserves its separate conversation.
Okay, so are we gonna have a roll call vote on this?
We're gonna have a roll call vote on all three of them.
Okay, well, can we do them one at a time?
That's what we're gonna do.
Okay. Because we don't all vote the same way.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Panaski.
So as a new board member, four or five of us, I guess it would have been five of us, took office in December and were hit by COVID three months later. My tenure on the board, honestly, there hasn't been a whole lot of optimism. A lot of it has been, how are we gonna get through this? How are we gonna survive this? And tonight I sit here really optimistic. I think we have found in Dr. Bedden a man who is going to be able to lead Centennial forward. He is a veteran who, everything I've read about him takes the best of that into his leadership style while being collaborative. He has an amazing track record of these recommendations we read, just sterling, stellar reputation from people he's worked with, from both internal and external figures such as statewide officials. I cannot wait until he is here to take over to get us started. He's gonna continue the great work that we've already been doing. And I, and one of the things that I think the public should be excited about is the fact that he is universally recognized as a good steward of the taxpayers' money. I believe, in fact, at his current district, he ended this year with a budget excess, which means he spent less than the budget had. And that is great for us. That's pretty much the entirety of what I say. I can't wait for him to get here. I am very excited. I am very optimistic for Centennial's future.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Well, Mr. Panaski stole most of what I was going to say, but he's absolutely right, and I liked your comments as well. We have in Dr. Bedden, a superintendent who has proven himself to be a leader of students, teachers, and, and communities in five different school districts before he comes here. Mr. Godikson and I have a privilege to speak to the board president and a board member from his district. And I, I think, you know, the most important thing I heard is that the children in Border Town School District are gonna miss it. Everything I have heard about him from the people around the state, since the news articles appeared yesterday and today, echoes that. I can't wait for him to get here either.
Mr. Godikson.
Yes, you know, I just wanted to have the community be completely aware, there were actually three finalists, you know, that we were considering. What happened was, we had a board member that made contact either directly or indirectly with a board member from that person's school district. That caused this person to initially withdraw from the interview and therefore never had a chance to interview for this position as superintendent. Now, when it came to Dr. Bedden, he required actually two emergency meetings. And now, even tonight, he wasn't even listed as anything as to be announced, you know what I mean, which could have meant that it could have been the other person that was in consideration. Now, the person that did not manage to come down for the interview because we held it back, he did contact the IU, and I do believe that he also contacted Andrew, or somehow the IU contacted Andrew in regards to rescheduling an interview. Now, he would have.
Mr. Godikson, can I respond to that? Because that's a matter of fact. I was told, the person you're referring to, I spoke to the director of the IU on Wednesday of last week in the morning, and I was told only then, and by that point, we had reached a tentative, basically in agreement in principle with Dr. Bedden. It was on that, the night before, Mr. Kilkenny, you can confirm that, Wednesday morning, the IU director told me that that candidate you are referring to had called him the day before to say that he would be interested in the position, quote unquote, if it fell through with Dr. Bedden, which it wasn't going to at that point.
Now, so let me, let me proceed here. So when we had the emergency meeting with Dr. Bedden, I asked, you know, if we could not make contact to this superintendent, sitting superintendent, to inquire if he was still interested. Now, he might have come in at a much lower rate than Dr. Bedden. First of all, Dr. Bedden asked for, or actually suggested his own salary coming to Centennial. At the second emergency meeting, I had, you know, inquired, you know, if he would come at his current salary. And he said, I have no interest in coming to Centennial for that salary. So he is quite selfish and considering where he wants to be only at the salary that he wanted, not what we offered. We were offering a competitive salary between 175 and 200. And he's getting more than that. Secondly, he is also getting 25, maybe even 31 sick days that he's gonna be able to convert to a deferred compensation when he leaves. So for that reason, I am struggling with having the community, you know, foregot more tax money than they needed in this case. I think it's important for the community to be aware that they could have saved, you know, quite a bit of money.
Well, once again, just to repeat for the community's knowledge, first of all, the candidate question that Mr. Godikson is referring to took himself out the night of his third interview. And granted, and we don't know who it was, we don't know what motivated, what happened. But granted, you know, his confidentiality, like, it was, it became known to his board prior to a third round interview that he was going to interview with Centennial. And he was upset by that, but ultimately, the choice was his. That very night, it was suggested to the head of the IU, why don't we, you know, talk to him and say, hey, why don't you come down? I myself supported that. But the head of the IU told us that he basically told us that night that he was disgusted and that he would never work here. And I never heard anything different from him directly, nor did the IU hear anything from him directly. I still have never spoken to him since, since the second round interview. Hold on, hold on, hold on. And the IU never heard anything different until we had already reached a tentative agreement with Dr. Bedden, at which point it was clearly too late. And that is the exact factual sequence of things.
Okay, so this was when you were still offering more money than we have, we had approved or suggested as a board.
But we had already, we, we, you know, in speaking with board members, we had five people who were, had expressed their willingness to go to the amount. And the amount that he is receiving is, again, the exact same scheduled amount that Dr. Ball was to receive. And by the way, for the community's benefit here, the Dr. Ball was like every other Act 93 that is administrative, I should say, management employee in the district. Dr. Ball was scheduled to receive no raise this year as a result of COVID. And so the salary he had last year is the salary that he would have had this year had he remained. Dr. Bedden is as, is really more qualified than Dr. Ball was when he arrived here, and really more qualified, and no offense to Dr. Ball, but he has a longer set of experience and has, I mean, more, more years in as a superintendent than Dr. Ball had when he left here. He is taking Dr. Ball's salary. We are not asking a taxpayer, or a teacher, or a, a secretary, or anyone to pay one dime more. He is simply taking over the contract, the, the salary that we had already budgeted and expected to pay. And, you know, he's a guy coming from one county, Burks, to another county, Bucks, where, you know, structures of contracts are simply different. And so that's, that's really that.
The only one taking a raise.
He, again, you know, the, well. He, uh, again, you know, the, well, Mrs. Islandberg, let, let me go, like, let, rather than get into a back and forth, let's go by the order of hands, Mrs. Islandberg.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. I, I simply wanted to, one of the, I wanted to offer another aspect that I think is a very positive in bringing Dr. Baden to our community. Some of you may know I work in real estate, um, and the academic uh, performance of school districts highly impact in a multifaceted way our community. Uh, one of the focuses that we have had as a community is increasing our academic performance in our schools. And it has been trending slightly, uh, in a, in a positive direction. Uh, Dr. Baden is, has expressed that very focus to increase our academic performance. Greater academic achievement in our schools creates more desirable community. It helps attract more young families to Centennial School District, which in turn creates greater opportunities for all of us. Our students, their families, our schools, our local small businesses. All of this leads to increased property values for us and our neighbors. With all Dr. Baden brings to us in knowledge, experience, and focus on academic achievement, I envision a positive impact. And I encourage, um, I'm sorry. Um, I, I expect a positive, that Dr. Baden will have a positive impact on Centennial School District. And for this, um, I am very happy and honored to have him, uh, joining us. Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Brancato. Mrs. Brancato. She stepped away. We'll come back. Mrs. Crossen.
So I, I understand what you're saying. In normal times, salary based on market value sounds just about right. Uh, we're not facing normal times right now. These are extremely difficult times for many of the families in our community. We have to care. We, we must care. Our teachers gave back, our administration gave back. And yes, I expect our superintendent to give back. I did not agree on the current salary that was offered, nor did I agree on a five-year contract. Um, I, I don't know where the five-year came from, and, and there's just too many, um, unsettling items. Now, if the board chooses to move forward with Dr. Baden, I will cooperate a hundred percent to assist in moving our district in the right direction. Um, over Dr. Baden's many years of serving school districts, he appears to be a supporter of quality education. And, and absolutely no one is saying anything about, um, him being qualified. It's, it's the money that he did not want to accept to come here. He is the only one who is taking a raise, and, and I understand what you're saying. It's, it's, it's a different area. And most, most, under normal conditions, I would say absolutely, but COVID is not a normal condition. And many of the people in our community are not working. And it doesn't seem like people say, oh, it's fifteen thousand dollars, it's twenty thousand dollars. That's a considerable amount of money. It was scheduled for Dr. Ball, yes, superintendent of the year, I understand that. But he's coming in here, he's not superintendent of the year, and no one else is taking a raise. That is the issue I have.
Mr. Miller. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. Mrs. Brancato's back. Mrs. Brancato.
Hi, um, thank you, Mrs. Crossen. Mrs. Crossen's already said most of what I wanted to say. Um, I really thought long and hard about how I could vote. And, and I, and like Mrs. Crossen said, we did not agree to a five-year contract. In fact, what we said was, nobody is getting more than a three-year contract. And then the next thing we know, certain members of our school board offered a five-year contract because that's what Dr. Baden wanted. I want a lot of things in life too, but you don't always get what you want. We are, we asked our teachers to forego their raises. They generously gave them back. We asked our Act Ninety-three to forego their raises. They generously gave them back. And then we had to tell our taxpayers we were raising their taxes. And many of them are without jobs for the first time in their entire lives. That is not right. We have thousands of people lining up for food because they just can't feed their families. Now, maybe not all of you see it, but we see it. Because we're giving out food, we're collecting food, and these are very humble people. And then we're gonna tell them that we're gonna give this gentleman a fifteen thousand dollar raise from where he comes from. We don't have the money for that right now. We have families who can't feed their children. That should come first. We, we didn't agree to all this. We, we agreed up to two hundred thousand, and I even said no to that. But next thing I know, we're giving this man whatever he asks for. That's not how negotiations go. Now, if you can look the taxpayers in the face and tell them you don't care that their kids can't eat and that they can't pay their bills and that eventually some mortgage company is gonna come after them because they can't pay their mortgages, but we did give this gentleman his raise. We have teachers, we have Act Ninety-three who live right here in our communities. So they're getting double slammed. They're not getting their raise, and we raised their taxes. How fair is that? It's not fair at all.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Dixon, before we go on to the next speaker, I just want everybody to keep their eye on the time. If we are ending at ten.
We're not ending at ten. We can got new business after ten o'clock. But I don't think we'll be in too bad of shape for that. Mr. Miller.
Yeah, uh, to that point, maybe we better, uh, grant an exemption to complete all new business before.
Let's worry about that. Let's, let's see how we do. Mr. Miller, go ahead. It's nine forty-three. We can be efficient.
Very good. I'll hold you to that. Uh, three things here. Number one, uh, the candidate Mr. uh, Goddickson is talking about hails by comparison in ability or experience. He was in his first superintendency, uh, in a tiny small, uh, school district uh, and had not proved any success. Uh, Dr. Baden comes with a huge track record. Uh, we've talked about the, uh, the change in market value. Uh, let's look at teachers coming from Boyer Town to Centennial. They would get a twelve thousand dollar raise, uh, for starting teachers, thirty-eight thousand in Boyer Town because that's what that market supports. It's, uh, it's more than that here. Uh, and, and lastly, uh, the, the man is at a level in his career where he deserves the kind of salary he's talking about. Uh, what he asked for was two percent above what Dr. Ball, uh, what the board authorized and only what Dr. Ball received, which he has agreed not to raise in uh, the second year of his contract unless, uh, the, the district finances match what would also entitle our, uh, Education Association and other members for an increase. So I think he's been very fair, very generous in coming here. And that, you know, the difference between fifteen thousand that somebody wanted to give him versus what he might do his first month here in the district. Uh, I'm, I'm willing to risk looking at the taxpayers in ninety days and having to crow or having to both look at the guy we got.
Mr. Martin.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Dixon. I'll try to be brief, and I agree with Mrs. Islandberg's comments. We had a very thorough process. During that time, there were many people express opinions that Dr. Baden has had several jobs and may not want to stay in this district for a period of time. I think it's a big advantage to have a five-year contract with him as opposed to a lesser number of years, which addresses that concern. He also during his time emphasized student achievement, which I think that's one thing we all wish to move forward and see as a number one priority. He answered every rumor that was spread about him that I heard, and he answered him to his great ability. Regarding the salary, he did make a concession in year two of the contract, which sort of covers the little bit of extra that was given to him, granted to him in year one. And I think given the size of the Centennial budget, the amount that he is being paid, um, extra is de minimis regarding the number of taxpayers you have uh, in this particular school district. Uh, and finally, uh, the other gentleman that has been raised, I thought very highly of him also. However, he chose not to come to a final interview, which in my mind, uh, sort of disqualified him from consideration regardless of the reason that he chose not to come. So I am, uh, proud to cast, that will cast a vote for Dr. Baden. I think he will be a wonderful superintendent and look forward to having him here for the next five years. Thank you.
Mr. Goddickson.
So, now again, you know, the, the other candidate had all the intentions of moving to Centennial. Now, Mrs. Islandberg said, yeah, real estate is important. You know, our new superintendent or the one that we're considering tonight has no intentions of moving to Centennial. So he's not bringing any tax money into, to town, even with the salary that he's getting. He is staying where he's at, out of county, out of district, you know, which is another, you know, benefit that would have come had the other candidate been considered.
Mr. Goddickson.
Mr. Baden was also, you know, considering withdrawing, so he was given two chan, two extra chances to come back. The third person was not given any chances.
Mr. Goddickson, two points. One, how do you know what Dr. Baden will or will not do in the future in terms of his residency?
I mean, I, I don't know. I'm hoping.
Exactly. Second of all, uh, once again, Dr. Baden did not decline to come to an interview. That was the, that was the thing that, that, that set the other candidate off in the, in, in the other direction was he declined to show up. And we did discuss the night that he didn't show up. Again, the IU director told us flatly and repeatedly to me, he used the word, he was disgusted and would never want to work here, and he told me that multiple times. And when he finally did contact the IU to say, it was only after he had accepted a five-year extension at his current job. So he was playing a game as well. Miss, uh, Mr. Birdnik.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, let me say that I deeply appreciate the laser focus Dr. Baden brings to Centennial School District's measures of academic performance. Uh, during the interviews, he correctly identified our school district as underachieving compared to several peer groups. One, by budget, two, by cost per pupil, three, by size, and four, by social economic status. His honest, uh, look at our situation was frankly breathtaking and refreshing. Um, instead of, uh, having to hear, uh, just tidbits of, of data spud in the most positive light possible. So we know on Dr. Baden, we're getting somebody who at least understands where we start. But I cannot vote yes tonight to Dr. Baden's appointment this evening for five reasons. One, we simply are not hiring the best candidate. The best candidate flat out out-interviewed the competition, demonstrating a deep knowledge of the Centennial School District and a crystal clear vision of a path forward. His participatory, participatory leadership style is proven with a seat at the table for all stakeholders and stands in stark contrast to Dr. Baden's transformational model. Participatory leadership speaks the language of we. Transformational leadership revolves around I, and we heard that loud and clear in each interview. I, I, I. Two, the salary is above the threshold set by the board. Exceeding that threshold in a year of givebacks by the Centennial Education Association and high unemployment in our community is distanced for the best. Three, on more than one occasion in the process, a fellow board member was chastised. Two additional emergency calls with Dr. Baden were required. If this is a preview of what is to come, we should expect tumultuous superintendent board relationships in the future. Four, the contract negotiations seem to drag on as long as the Louisiana Purchase. So much so that instead of holding a meet and greet for the community before the appointment, we now find ourselves voting on the contract, and then and only then will the community have a chance to meet Dr. Baden after the vote. Five, the candidate's name and draft contract were on the agenda Friday, and then all of a sudden became TBA with no further details. As of speak now, the contract itself is not on board docs for the community to review. This is a travesty of transparency. I realize that despite my, despite my objections, this will cost us time. And I promise all, I will uphold my duty to work constructively with a new superintendent. Thank you.
Um, to the, to the point about the TBD, uh, let me just say to everyone, that was in fact my, my fault in that Dr. Baden, you know, the contracts are mostly negotiated between attorneys, a board attorney and, 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 uh, Dr. Baden has his own attorney. And, um, on Wednesday, you know, I had a lot of going on at my job as well, cause I do have a full-time job. And, uh, so I was speaking with the, with one of our secretaries about getting the agenda up. And I said, okay, the motion will have Dr. Baden's name. And at that point, we didn't actually have, you know, it, the i's weren't dotted and the t's weren't crossed. To make a long story short, I said, okay, and then it went up, uh, really before we had the final okay from Dr. Baden. And it wasn't that he wasn't coming here, it's that, you know, it leaked just a little bit, a moment sooner than he would have otherwise alight uh, in Boyer Town, which by the way, if you want some real instructive commentary, go look at the Boyer Town School District Facebook page. It's just pages and pages of people feeling horrible that they're losing this guy. Um, but, uh, to make a long story short, then, yeah, so we changed it to TBD at the, at the request of the IU, even though the force was already out of the barn at that point. Um, and then actually Saturday morning, Dr. Baden gave the final okay. So we could have changed it back, but to be perfectly honest, when this weekend came, I was exhausted and I never changed, you know, I didn't think to call and change it back. So I will take the mea culpa that it read TBD tonight. I was under the impression the contract would be, the contract was still having corrections made as early as this afternoon. I mean, typographical error type corrections. Uh, but I thought it would be on the board docs. If it's not, it can, I mean, it's a public document, it'll be posted forthwith. I don't see any more comments, so I think at this point, we've heard where everybody is. It's nine fifty-three. Let's call the vote. Mrs. Robold, Mrs. Robold, please.
Mr. Panofsky.
Yes.
Mr. Birdnik.
Hello.
Mrs. Brancato.
No.
Mrs. Crossen.
No.
Mrs. Islandberg.
Yes.
Mr. Goddickson.
No.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
That's five, four.
You should be ashamed of yourselves.
That's a very terrible way to begin anything, Mrs. Brancato. That was really uncalled for. Let's move on. Four point two.
Mr. Dixon, the truth often hurts you, often.
That's not about the truth. It's about we're bringing in a superintendent. It's not sneaky.
Sneaky, yes.
Mrs. Brancato, that's it. We're gonna cut your mic off. Four point two approves the, let's go, Mrs. Mrs. Crossen.
Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, four point two approves the draft Pennsylvania Department of Education Health and Safety Plan as per the attached.
So this is second, okay, so we heard all of the comments from the community. Does anybody want to comment further on this health and safety plan?
Uh, I, I said second for instruction. Uh, and I'm gonna suggest that, uh, since we're gonna meet August fourth to make a decision. Uh, and since we don't have a recommendation or a specific recommendation from administration, won't have one until then, I'm suggesting that we table this till August fourth.
Somebody want to second the table?
I'll second.
Mr. Panofsky seconds. Do we just want to take a vote on tabling it?
Yes.
All right, Mrs. Robold, uh, uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Crossen.
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg.
Yes, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Mr. Goddickson.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky.
Yes.
Mr. Birdnik. Mrs. Brancato.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Motion to table carries nine zero zero.
Uh, okay, uh, so now four point three, Mrs. Crossen.
Yeah, I'd like to pull, pull four, four point three for discussion.
Well, we don't, we don't have to, we don't have to pull it. It's the last item. Go ahead, Mrs. Crossen.
Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, four point three approves the personnel agenda including retirements, resignations, authorization to employ, leave of absence, and change of status as per the attached.
I expect we're going to table this. I expect we're going to table this, uh, before we even grab a sec. Do we have to second it before we table it?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's seconded, thank you, Mr. Mar, Mr. Miller. Uh, Mr. Martin, you have your hand up first.
It was a mistake.
Oh, Mr. Martin, I said, not Mr. Panofsky.
No, no, he was saying it was a mistake, he's on the.
Okay, uh, Mr. Bergnick.
Thank you, I would like to make a motion to table the first four items under the personnel agenda that appear in change of status.
Um, that, before, before we do that, do we want to just table the entire thing? Or just those four point, those four?
Can we bring it back on the fourth?
I don't see why not, is there anything that has to get done tonight? Somebody from administration, can you answer that question? Is there anything that we're just burning to do tonight for legal reasons?
We can table it to the fourth, Andrew, you need to.
I'm seeing a list up on the screen that I believe should be confidential.
Oh, is that me? Oh, no. Well, at the same time, I don't want to, if there's business here that can just be uncontroversially conducted, that's fine with me.
Uh, Andrew, I do believe what Chris Bergnick mentioned, you know, was the proper thing. We can, you know, if we can just hold those four top items and then vote on the rest.
One, two, three, four. Okay, all right, I mean, that's fine with me. So we got a motion to withhold the four items. Do I have a second to that motion?
Miss, I seconded the motion, but Ms. Crossen has to, uh, approve the change.
Oh, uh, Mrs. Crossen, do you approve the change?
Absolutely.
Uh, so we have a second, the.
I, I seconded the motion and also agreed to the changes.
Okay, so now we have a motion to table the first four names on the last item. Uh, let's just have a roll call vote on that, Mrs. Robold, please.
Okay, uh, the roll call vote is on, um.
The motion to table the four.
The motion to table those four, first four names.
Yeah.
Under change of status. Okay, uh, Mrs. Islandberg.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Goddickson.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
I'll abstain because I don't know the reason for it.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky.
I'm also abstaining because I don't know the reason for it as well.
Can I? All right, all right.
Let's continue with, with the vote.
The vote, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato.
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. Crossen.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Okay, that's, uh, seven with two extensions.
Okay, I'm sorry for those who didn't, were on the board who weren't, uh, and maybe I should have had a moment's discussion. But the issue is that, um, the change in status for those four employees, it's not previously reported to the board as part of a, uh, as the part of the budget. And so therefore, um, and, you know, look, it was communications, we don't have to get into all the hows and whys and wherefore, suffice it to say, when we proved the budget, uh, the 1.9% tax increase back in June, it was apparently, the idea was that would be inclusive of these title changes, but those title changes were not reported at that time. And they affect obviously people's statuses and incomes. And so we wanted another week anyway to see what we could do to correct the situation, that's all. So tabling is so that we could come back with something better than this.
Okay, and are we going to vote on the rest of the personnel items?
Uh, certainly. So does anybody want to discuss anything else on the personnel agenda? Otherwise, we can go to a roll call vote on that.
Okay, Mr. Goddickson.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bergnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato.
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen.
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
All right, 9-0-0 for the rest of the personnel items along the agenda.
All right, uh, do we have any further board discussion and comments? And or comments?
Yeah, it's past 10 o'clock, we can't go on.
Seeing none, uh, any communications? From anyone? Seeing none.
Andrew, before you close, there was a comment that was supposed to be read, that was held.
Oh, you're correct, I'm sorry, I forgot about the, that, we had a community comment with respect to Dr. Ben that we should have heard before the vote, but please, Mr. Ross, if you could re, or I don't know how many we have, but I've got a couple.
The comment, the comment was read. The other comment wa, was inappropriate.
Oh, okay.
Can I make a motion to adjourn then?
Sure, uh, unless there's any communications, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Goodbye.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, goodbye, everybody.